I hope you have.
All right, this time we'll call the regular county commission meeting order certified and corn consent general approval of payroll.
I'll move.
Say. On favor.
Aye.
New York, Arpa, Arva, New York. No more. Come on up, guys, ladies.
Are you ready? Thank you.
Bam.
Asses out.
You see the new Route 66 thing that came out with? What is the? Electric company?
Oh, yeah.
They look good.
I'm trying to get a copy of everything for the museum. Yeah.
I looked at that one this morning, they had the coffee table.
Right.
They look good.
Right.
All right.
We're just here to say thank you and give you an update on the, on the growth alliance. It's been a very, very busy year. We've had some great, great speakers to include Mo Dot came and gave us update on the Route 44, Quarter Highway 44 project. Was there probably an hour, hour and a half?
Yes.
Took questions, did a great, great job. We've had speakers from Missouri Economic Development. We also have local speakers. Beth Wiles will be our speaker in November. We also just awarded $500 small business grants to 10 individual businesses in our community trying to give back that way. So we just continue to appreciate y'all's support and contribution to the Growth Alliance and here to answer any questions, but it's been a very, very active year for us. We are, we really strive to have quality speakers at each meeting that we have and I know we'll have a, an update from a local realtor probably at one of our next meetings in the future. So it's been really active. We're very active in the Plaski County Health Department's annual health fair that they have. So membership is up, but attendance at our meetings is running on the small side, you might have 15. On the high side, you might have 25 every month. You guys are always welcome as you're part of the Growth Alliance and any, any other questions that we can answer or do for you, we'll be happy to do so. We have one of our newest members here.
Kiala Bennett?
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Kiala Bennett and I'm just a community volunteer and like to see how I can interject myself in the community.
Great, thank you.
And just a shout out to Anita.
Oh, Lord.
She's a, she's our go-to volunteer that has kept this thing going through extra duties as assigned. We'll say that, but she's done a wonderful job arranging meters. Our, Deborah Baker, our, our health department has done a fabulous job also along with many, many others. So we just wanted to come by and thank you for your support. Invite you to any of our meetings that occur on the third Wednesday of each month and answer any questions.
It has been a busy year for us. We participated. You can read in here like the mile marker signage and we did the MRR project with MRPC. The I-44 study, we've stayed involved in it because we didn't want our county bypassed or any of our cities bypassed like happened to Camden on theirs. And so other than that, the sports complex study, that was through a grant. And although not a lot has happened, a Glista seed was planted with about 150 people that participated in that study. So, and then of course the wellness conference that we participate in with the health department every year. So this is the county like our economic development tool. I know St. Robert and Waynesville each have their own economic development people, but for the county, we just try to keep our name out there and, you know, get the businesses involved and.
Kind of the, the whole purpose of it is, is to create a, a group, you know, with the city governments and the county government to focus on business here in our community. Yeah, because we want to keep it within Plaski County and, and not going east and west. And so far it's really turning out to be a, a very good endeavor that, you know, it started strong if you remember and it kind of slowed, but through the work of a lot of great volunteers and a great team has, has picked up momentum again and we don't want to see that stop. It's one of those things when the phone call comes in, you know, you know, all communities want to have it in their community, but the goal is to keep it in Plaski County. Find the best spot, the best location and make sure it stays here and doesn't go to a different county or community.
Appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, it's just, it's amazing. All the volunteers, people that we have doing things and they came last week, presented a check to the sheriff in that bike race.
Right.
You know, that goes on when there's volunteers and handle all that and it's just amazing.
It is.
A lot of great people.
Blue workers out there, people don't, they don't see.
Yeah. Yeah, our community is made of volunteers. At, at the end of the day, you won't find a community that has more volunteers that are working for the betterment of our local area than what, than what we have in Plaski County.
I agree. Fantastic.
So, thank you all for being a member and you're welcome to come. Third Wednesday every month at nine o'clock at St. Robert Council Chambers.
Yeah. Maybe even give a county update one day. How about that? There's your new speaker.
That day.
Okay, guys.
Say anything that we can do, you know, I mean, that's the thing. Just give us a phone call, you know, it's, there's so much stuff going on.
Sometimes we get tied up in so much stuff, we.
I know.
Right.
But anytime you have something to reach out.
Right.
We'll do whatever we can to.
Well, each of you wear many different hats and, and, but if you find you have a spare hour one day, third Wednesday, we appreciate all y'all do. Thank you so much.
I would say on the I-44 study, we put all hands on deck though. And Preston did an impressive job of, you know, talking to us. So I will be glad to see it when it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, guys. Thank you.
Yep.
Nice to meet you.
Incredible what all goes on.
It is. People don't realize what all happens in this county at any given moment.
All the time.
There's something going on all the time. Guess we figured out everywhere we go to sign.
Did you see your sign on the spur, Dave? Where you turn to go to Walmart from, you go past O'Reilly's, turn to go to Walmart, has that little spur there? There's a Dave Archford County Clerk sign there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
How long is it?
With it, on the backside, it has a, they had a car show sign taped over it. So I guess. I guess, I guess the one.
Somebody used one of your old signs for a car show. So I guess this side fell off.
You might get it whether you want it or not.
Yeah.
Right in.
I guess I don't see that.
Yeah, we would, let's, me and my wife go over there.
I went by there, I don't know how many times this weekend, but I was busy.
Said, I about had a wreck. I said, take a picture of this on the way back as we. Then on the, on the other side, on the side coming back from Walmart, he's had a car show sign with an arrow pointed this way.
Yeah, the grandkid in town took him to the tree and up at the summit. Oh, my God. Ever been up there during Halloween? Their family's a group together with candy in one corner house that I bet they had $3,000 with decorations up and they had a big kit in the driveway with the music playing and that guy said they gave out five coolers full of candy. But it was wall to wall traffic. You couldn't, if there had been a fire, probably how a fire truck could have through there. That much was up there. But it was busy. Yeah, that place was wall to wall kids and adults. I was like, I'll sit right here and yell this. I walked the first street after I was done. Paul Paul had stopped.
Cropper had a nice event too. Did you guys go up there, Rob, or drive through or anything? They had fire department was up there with fire trucks and that nuclears hardware had stuff going on. The Humboldt had stuff going on. There was people across with trunk or treat.
Avenue, yeah.
They, the trucker was full. There was a lot of people up there hunting kids.
With their spitty holes up there. It was flat.
Y'all have anything for me, Dave?
I don't think so, Mike.
All right.
You do. My granddaughter wouldn't feel in the best, so they didn't get around a whole lot. So I didn't get any kids.
Awesome.
All the pills come wrong.
Just here last week.
I was looking at all the youth deer pictures. Yep, I was waiting for that eight month old to get that kid playing, but this year I didn't see one.
I seen one kid posing with his deer. He'd been hit by the scope.
Did you see that?
Yeah, he had stitches.
You can see where it got him right there.
About ruined my son from deer hunting like that. He wanted to use my grandpa's 30 up six. And he just a little faddling boy. He got his eye too close to the scope. He got the deer, but then every year after that, it missed. It flinched, it jerked his head back. He didn't want to, he didn't want to keep it up.
He wasn't no part of that gun.
No, didn't want it up there close to the scope.
My brother did that one year. I was, he, he had a perfect, it was like the.
Yeah.
The game ward walked up to him, probably an hour or two later, doesn't really blood run down his face. Game ward goes, well, did you get him? He goes, no.
No, they got.
He goes, look like he got about six inches, Kevin, and no deer. I mean, that guy's good.
Story to tell for the ages.
It was one of those older, it was one of them older scopes that had no rubber on the end of it, it was metal.
On the old ones they made out of metal.
Yeah, and boy, it got him good. You don't have to stick your eyeball in the scope.
Yeah. I tell it, I relate for a reason.
Thank you.
It was closing all the way. I must have jammed it that way and done something for the finger to just hang out way over the left, right. Go to the doctor. Well, we'll have to break that, leave it back to where it's done. I like where it's at. He ain't breaking nothing.
Let me see your good hand. I'll get you something to keep your mind off of that.
My wife has two hammer tools. The doctor's like, I can fix them. She goes, oh, you can't even. And he goes, who did three break them? And I was like, well, recently, because I like my hammer tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen it on Jerry and I'm like, going on.
I, I seen her post that and I said, I just can't, I just can't gra, I just can't grasp that.
I used to do a lot of work for the dad and mom for years. One of my boys called it scary dungeon. The house, the other weird set of steps she went down. Then there was a door, a half a door that went in with a gas water heating in there, the furnace and something else. All the outside thoughts, you had to crawl back up in there to it. My boy going down these steps. He goes, I'll wait in the car. He goes, this is scary.
Moving up in the world, you got some pumpkin spice and caramel.
Certain spice, herbs.
Yeah.
It's kind of like pineapple on a pizza to me, it's an album. There's some things that just don't go along.
Sweet what, salty?
That's the pumpkin smell, every time that pumpkin spice comes out, I'm like, no. Kind of like pineapple on a pizza, no.
Yeah, these free for drinks, eighteen dollars for a cup of coffee, I just think.
I seen a video of a guy going through Starbucks, he wanted a black coffee, the guy goes, what's a fruity something, uh, no, I want a black cup coffee. Okay, I guess, give me that, they go, give me large, we don't have large, what do you mean you don't have a large, we got a venti, but what's a venti, he goes, a large. So I took my granddaughter to be there and she was ordering, I'm trying to explain the orders to them, I'm like. And then I got to looking at their, they have these little cake pops, they're on a stick, looks like a sucker, they're only that big, like three ninety-nine. I went, what's one make?
Another big deal's dirty sodas.
Yeah.
Dirty sodas.
Yeah.
Dirty sodas.
Yeah, just take a Sprite, put flavors in it, you call it the pink unicorn or something.
Yeah, they call them all different flavor, yeah. It's getting a little crazy out there.
I know somebody that just went and bought a whole turntable full of that stuff for the grandkids, and then they'll come over there and they'll be.
My wife, you see them pumps over there?
My wife's got like eight of them. How much that sent me back?
Hey, my wife's got eight of them pumps like that and bottles like that for all her drinks and.
But I call, I call them pirates because they leave with plunder, they just got a, got a pile of tow site, they leave.
She tells me, I can make them here cheaper than I go, I go buy on scooters or wherever, I'm like, well, how much these bottle and pump cost you?
Thirty or ten dollars for one.
And you only go get a drink every so often. So I think we're, we're in the, we're on the backside of this one.
Oh, dirty soda.
Yeah, I'm in the red on that one. Oh yeah, I got everything here to make my own. How many times I see her make one? Every once in a while.
No, you can't have that day off.
Just, just get that out of the way. I'd say the most.
So I'll take your pass to last. In case somebody calls back another day, you can save the old one.
Oh, he doesn't.
You think about.
Yep.
Election day tomorrow.
No election in Pulaski.
No, but.
Well, we got Virginia, New York.
Green counties though.
You get Jersey County though?
There's several counties that have some like tax issues.
Texas county has got one.
Senior freeze tag.
I'd like to senior freeze on my gray hairs.
Don't laugh.
Not quite freeze, like a chip. Went up.
I better be quiet.
Yep, you have a riot out there. Let it go.
Forty dollars. The senior freeze. Personal property.
Thank you.
No, no. I'll check out the next one. All this stuff on my purse, I thought I didn't have it. But if you have enough, January first. I'll do something, I'll do something.
Yeah, that's good work.
It was a good World Series.
Yeah, it was.
Think I saw half of that game.
Well, you know, when it was played in Los Angeles, you had, like that one game, I stayed up till two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, the one extra inning.
And I liked the, yeah, the eighteen innings, whatever it was, sixteen, eighteen innings. Then the very last game, it was eleven. At least it was in Toronto, it was less. It wasn't no two o'clock in the morning game again. Who won, who was winning pitcher, I don't even remember, I was so tired when I went to Phil, I couldn't tell you, I didn't tell you who won.
It was the game six winning pitcher. He threw like a hundred pitches the night before and then came back in relief and threw three innings or two and three, two and a third or some, almost three innings of relief the next night.
Oh, uh.
Yamamoto.
Yamamoto, yeah. Cause somebody posted on there that this year's World Series parade is gonna be held in Tokyo. Know the people that was at the sixteen or eighteen inning game, they quit selling alcohol at seven inning. They played another full game with no alcohol. They were sobered up when they got to go home. Good thing about it. People drove home, they had to be sober, but they're pretty close.
Get your shed moved. I am.
It was beast.
Yeah, it was.
I went ahead and got two guys coming to give bids on that shed out there, told them shop, told them it's gonna have to be plums, electrical around in it, and something done with the heating in there, and I'm sure it's gonna go over. I just, I got them giving bids on it.
Did you fill the bathroom on this?
I got the petition built up, yeah, I got it all framed. Yeah, I went out there one Sunday afternoon and did that. Cause it's gonna have to have the power run from the fuel pumps into the building, salt shed. Winter's about in, it ain't even done, it'll have to be insulated and hose, I mean, it's gonna probably be a bigger project. I'd be running around, I could have done a lot of it myself, I just, I don't have time to.
No, that's.
Just can't be.
When I get out of here, man, I'll go back to it.
That's what, you kind of have to make that, okay, it's your faith, you're working on roads and.
Yeah, you know.
Cause we can.
Well, if I'm over there, I could do a lot of it myself, but I just, myself, I don't have time, I gotta be out looking, I just got.
See all that band playing?
You're over there, you can feel that. Being short handed, having to help them when they need it.
He made Grinch cookies. I bought him an air hockey table, too, he, we were somewhere and he got an air hockey table, it's funny, my older son. He played sports, I hate to lose, he's one of them, but he ate the loot, he would play down to the tent. My grandson now is the same way, and I bought him a little air hockey table. He's same way, you started to win, he would take the pucks and the thing with him. He goes, we're done, and he'd turn it off. Here it is.
Sounds like playing.
He's sitting there playing, and then he gets mad, and when he scores, he goes, oh, like that. But then he would block, he would block the goal over here where you couldn't, he would block the hole where you couldn't score.
Don't play.
And that's my granddaughter playing him, seeing him go like that, he scored, he goes, but he would block the hole where you couldn't score, he's dumb. Then he come out there, he come out, he thought that's his bike, he was cleaning his bike.
He's buffing it.
Oh yeah.
Oh, did he, three or four?
He'd be three Christmas Day. But he would sit there and just block that hill where you couldn't get that fucking hole. And then when he was, he goes, score like that, just look at you like that. My other granddaughter was playing, she said, you're cheating, no, I win.
Yeah.
Yeah. He had me laughing.
Let's see, the request for bid should be running this weekend, but Dixon Pilots.
They get your salt too, you?
No, we haven't seen any salt yet.
Hey Sheriff. That your property over by Clement Farms?
The what?
Your property over by Clement Farms?
I don't wanna talk about that mess.
Is that the one that sells stuff or something over on Cave Road?
I just fell across that feed.
Oh yeah, I did too.
I was wanting to get an interview with Sheriff, but his name was.
I don't know how I got involved in all that crap.
Your name floated across the ether. I was gonna go with your chief deputy and see if you wanna tighten on that, but he declined right away.
And at least he thinks a lot of people care about it.
Yeah, I know.
You heard that guy, it's awful. Thirteen floor, they determined he wasn't bouncing.
Gets that river sign, each mile markers, they're just gonna have a sign like at the lake, just marking the.
Yeah, they've got some up above Jerome.
Everybody's insurance going up or how is, oh my God, I looked at my insurance policy on my house, and I'm like, what? Why have they gone so high? Everyone of these disasters, I guess. Insurance has gone stupid on your house.
If they could pull it straight, it'd probably be six hundred.
I'm going shopping, I may, I mean, it may be the cheapest, I don't know, but I'm still gonna shop.
Yeah, I've got a little.
Insurance.
Six or eight mile section up by Manus, and I haven't been on yet.
But you've been on the rest of it.
And I have the whole Gaskinade done.
I'll be darned.
I've got one of them books that I've, I've done, I've highlighted it every time I've plugged this section in.
I don't know how far up the Gaskinade that way I've been, but I know I've went to Piney all the way through to the Gaskinade down to six three.
Now, the upper part, I count being on it, cause you, I mean, it's just a little creek that runs. And a lot of it gone down there by Hartville and Seymour, just low water crossings, like tavern, you know, and, but. And then when it actually gets floatable, I'm passing down there.
I don't think I've done most, one thirty-three bridge up there on.
Gets farther down, it goes wider, deeper, it did, but.
Or even, even just below Jerome, it's like a whole different river, you know, I mean, they put, they put pontoons on it and everything else.
You watch them ski down there.
Down on the.
Them boys down there in Jerome will ski up there.
I know Vienna, I guess they probably still have boat race.
Boat races there at the bridge, yeah.
Just scared me to death, thinking about what's floating.
Buddy of mine's got one of them boats in Raleigh, but he took me down there on the river with even, wow, I think you get to going so fast that when the bugs hit you, it feels like the rocks. And you're going so fast, I was like, slow this thing down, you know, there's floating stuff out here, you never know, blowing out a log still up here. We're running sixty-five, seventy mile an hour down the Route Gaskinade, that's too fast for me.
Yeah.
It's got the big old V eight with a loud motor and, well, he play drag race down there, is what they do, he opens that thing up, I'm like. Ah, too fast for me. Then all them people get to drinking down there when they're doing, ah, I'll go home. I won't be no part of this. We're like three weeks away from the conference, yeah.
Yeah, listen, well, yeah, right there, three weeks.
There's a little picture there, something I posted, Riddle Bridge. They took it down in the river.
I seen a picture of the old bridge, it was right out here, they took it, um, years. When did they take that old bridge down here? Old Crocker Bridge, it was downstream, what, quarter mile, maybe less?
Well, I don't know, that's picture here was from eighty-seven.
It went over to the road that goes over to Bob White, I remember right.
Yeah, that's been a long title go.
I did some work at customers that, that owned that park down there, and I went down there the other time, I was like.
Yeah.
Like even old Ross Bridge over there, it was an old one, I mean, I was probably a kid whenever it was taken out.
Yeah, I don't remember the old Gaskinade Bridge, we always call it there where Newcombs Own, where Sherry Riggs Beows. The old, the old bridgehead is what we always called it, but I don't ever remember the bridge being standing.
I remember going across to Nick, and, and the car with Dad and stuff when I was a kid. Ann and I started dating in the early eighties, and it was, the bridge part was gone.
Yeah.
And the, the center piling was still there.
Yeah.
And it went out like the mid eighties, and then that one big flood.
Yeah, you used to see the pilings when you gig, you know, or insufficient there, but I don't, I don't ever remember crossing the bridge or anything.
Center one went out, and then the one closest to our side of the bank went out a couple, several years later. Like you forgot, now, if you know what you're looking for, you can still see that, like, the base part, I guess, just of the, of the water.
I know them old planks that used to go on the one down there on Riddles. And they'd be a, a foot wide or better, three inches thick, oak planks and be sixteen foot wide, you'd have to. Grandpa'd get called out in the middle of the night whenever he worked for the county, and they'd go down there and find one that's loose, and they'd pry it off and throw it in the river. Leave a gap in your tires, all the between, and you'd have to go down there and, and them spikes, you'd go down there and put a, put a new board on it in the middle of the night. Somebody'd get to prying them off, and they'd sometimes maybe pull two out. You down there and there'd be a car setting and hurt the front tires off in them. It, it was, it was a mess. Oh yeah, I've been, yeah, go up out there and hit your brakes.
Should be a pretty big deal, about the motorcycle ride.
I'm stranded, Kay, they're that big around, it's just amazing how they, how they built them. I'm stranded, they're that big around, it's just amazing how they, how they built that.